Called over to the City Council Work Session for the CDV's Grand Forks for Tuesday, December 13th. Would the City Council please call Ron?
Mayor Steve Cameron?
Here.
Council President Mark Olstead?
Here.
Council Vice President Henry Paul?
Here.
Council members, friends better?
Here.
Del Towns?
Here.
Tim Johnson?
President.
Brian Larson?
Here.
Does turn court number one, discussion on setbacks for high efficiency wood furnaces. Ms. Ellis?
I, you had asked last week that I present some maps showing like a hundred foot setback. Direction I took from the meeting was not property line but was from habitable space. And so what I did was I started with Mr. Johnson's property, which is at 920 Ninth Street, or Ninth Avenue, excuse me, southeast. And this is his property right here. So what I did was I looked at both houses and once we get to specific properties, whether they be large or small, we wanted to kind of get an idea of if it would be doable with a hundred foot setback, what it would look like with a 50 foot setback. We do have a number of lots that would meet that hundred foot setback. However, locating the furnace does put it considerably in the middle of their back property. But if you go from the furthest back corner of this house and measure 100 feet, we're at approximately the center of their property. And if you can want to go another 100 feet in this direction, it puts it there. So we would have to go further back. So this does not meet the 100 foot setback on this side, does meet the 100 foot setback on the other side. So if we measure from this point, we're 150 there, we're a little over 100. So it puts it approximately in somewhere in this general area. So one of the things that was discussed too is like lots in the south end and the Point of Woods addition. Now these lots are quite large and I showed you a couple of these. You can put them much closer to the house and get that 100 feet pretty easily in their So these lots wouldn't have a problem with habitable space with 100 feet. Same with these ones. They do put them further back at the end of the property, but 100 feet, we're getting, you know, we're getting pretty close to the middle of the backyard. So it's doable on some of these lots. The ones that we have the problems with, not the newer lots, but some of these smaller, narrower ones. This one obviously, and if that's 60 feet, so if we put it in the backyard, where you This one works. This one works. That works in this direction too. Doesn't work there. So, but it's doable. These lots, we wouldn't be able to. To get it 100 feet from here, we're in another person's property. So majority of the lots on the south end and then on the north end, we would struggle with even our new Waters Edge lots. But 100 feet, which is the minimum that Ron had discussed with an ordinance, is doable for Mr. Johnson and a couple of the lots. Now where we run into the idea that we could sit with a 100 foot setback, we have looked at other cities ordinances and things pertaining to the furnace. And I'm gonna turn that over to Jeff Bushy because he's been looking at it in terms of fire code and then Ron in terms of other city ordinances, just so you can get an idea of what other cities have and kind of where they're headed with the high efficiency furnaces. So, go ahead Jeff.
Yeah, thank you, Council President and Councilman. So I did look in the fire code in this and for the most part, the fire code references building code and mechanical code, with the exception of requiring all the units to be listed and then also to be installed to code and to manufacturer specs. I did call Crookston, Bemidji, Morehead. They don't have any ordinances in place, but they've had these discussions and they haven't done any action with them yet. That's pretty much all that I have for you on this. Any questions for me?
Yeah, one question on that 100 foot setback. Is that setback, is, should that be from the homeowner's house as well so that this boiler is set back from their domicile for like, in case there's a fire in the boiler? That it's not right next to the structure that they're living in?
I guess fire code does not address any of the setbacks.
Okay.
No, no. And neither does building code. It has to be properly insulated. There's a couple of things that you have to do like you would with fireplace, something similar to that. But Brad and I couldn't find anything specific where it had to be set so far away from the home. One of the discussions that Ron and I had had at the department head meeting was, so we set 100 foot setback from habitable space and not property line. Now what happens if somebody wants to add on to their bedroom or they add on living space to the back of their property? Now that furnace has become non-conforming, you know, because if they've added on, you know, bathroom, bedroom, et cetera, now they're 80 feet from the furnace rather than the 100 feet, you know, that we have in our setback requirements in the ordinance. So discussion, you know, in regards to whether it's habitable space or property line might have to be considered because I don't want, I don't want to tell the person that's coming in for their addition to say, nope, you can't build it because your neighbor put in a high efficiency furnace and now you're gonna be encroaching on that setback. So, so that would have to be a consideration is, you know, how we actually address this if we were to do an ordinance.
I know in, in planning, they'll talk about a self-imposed hardship. And if indeed that is some kind of hardship, it's really, it really is self-imposed. So I would hate to either block their addition and I would hate to call it non-conforming. Maybe the, the ordinance could be written in such a way that if they later on encroach on that 100 feet, this is still a conforming use and that's still an acceptable. I mean, that was at their, their prerogative, not at the prerogative of the one with the furnace. So yeah, I could see some, if there would be a way to draft an ordinance like that, that if the homeowner did it themselves, that's great. You know, eyes wide open, self-imposed hardship.
The other discussion I think is pretty prime with this type of weather. If you're trying to meet a 100 foot setback and your furnace is sitting, you know, 70 feet from the back of your house and it's snowing out, you know, stoking it and getting the wood out to it too, I mean, is this something to meet that 100 foot setback that's even worth it for them to have a high efficiency furnace? I mean, it could be. I'm not saying that we should ignore, you know, an ordinance or, or consider those things. I'm just saying that putting a furnace in the back of, of their property 70 feet from their house and then where is their wood pile stored and is it stored inside something, you know? Is it, are we, what's the word I'm looking for? Are we regulating them out of wanting one? So if we're going to have them, I think we could, we should consider, you know, how we, we want to have them if we're gonna write an ordinance so that those properties that are larger have the ability to have it. Otherwise, I would say we don't write an ordinance and don't allow it because we would be regulating all but four or five people out of the idea of having it. So that, that's just my personal opinions on, on that, so.
For you Chief, you mentioned that the units have to be listed. I was just curious who's the listing agency or who certifies these? What's the, the company?
That's a very good question. So there's multiple listing agencies out there, but the big one is UL.
So UL does underwrite these or underwrite laboratories?
Yes.
Interesting.
Well, not these in particular. I mean, they, they'll look at heating devices in general. Whether they do these, I can't answer that.
Gotcha. I know they're big into every kind of electronics and, you know, things you plug into an outlet or hardwire, the UL is all over that stuff.
As long as it's listed, which means it's been tested to meet the standards by whatever organization.
The research that I've done and I can, is, is there's, there's some communities that have them, they have setbacks, they're all over the place. Whether it's, whether it's 100 feet, most of them, some of them from the property line, some of them from the neighbors, from the neighbors' structures. If you go to the EPA and you go to the MPCA, the, all of their guidelines right now are based upon the new efficient, high efficiency solid fuel heating devices. Specifically, if you go to the MPCA and look at their ordinance, the only place that they allow those ordinances, first of all, it's 100 feet from the property line, the setbacks. And second of all, they don't, in their model ordinance, they don't have any of them in a residential area. They're all in designated ag areas or they're all in designated industrial areas. Primarily, they're doing it for particulate matter, emissions issues. Even though they're high efficiency, what they're looking at is the, is the, where they are based upon the emissions issues. We've just dealt with this with the asphalt plant, but now we're looking at, instead of being miles away from somebody's house, we're looking at 100 feet. And so my biggest concern is, I understand Mr. Demers's point that, you know, people have fires in their back, fire pits, but this would be from, we'll say, six months out of the year when the temperature, and, and they're regulated all over the place. But it's typically six months out of the year, anytime it drops below 65 degrees, they have stack heights that are typically 20 feet higher than the next individual's house. But all of them are concerned about the emissions. And so now my biggest concern when we're trying to enforce these are the unknowns. Okay? So now I've got, maybe the emissions are, maybe we, we are able to be 100 feet away, but now those emissions are next to some children that have asthma. So it becomes a public nuisance. The, then we're trying to, we're trying to enforce those types of issues, we're trying to enforce stockpiling of wood issues, we're trying to enforce nuisance issues because there, that's a whole different dynamic of this discussion. And so though it's a, I know Chief Bushy had a conversation with the building inspectors out of Bemidji and they're highly against it, you know, having, having any types of these in, in the residential areas. There are some of them, but from the most part that I can find anywhere, there's not a lot of people that have made, or cities that have had ordinances within the city residential areas that are allowing them. There are some, but there just doesn't seem to be a whole lot of them. And I think that's because of the emissions issues that they run into. And, and they are, again, if you go through the emissions, some of them aren't even allowed depending upon what type you have. They go from not allowed to 500 feet to 1,000 feet and then are in agricultural and they're in industrial areas. So that's the information that I found. I know it's not real helpful in this situation, but that's where it was. And that, and like I said, the MPCA's model ordinances is right online. I sent it to everybody in that last, if you go through there and one part that I didn't pick up on until I read it a second time was the fact that they don't even allow them in residential areas according to that ordinance. It's all in ag or industrial.
So with the MPCA, is that just a recommendation or is that actually ordinances that they are gonna enforce for every city?
No, the MPCA, it's just a recommended model ordinance that they're putting out based upon, they look at the, the mechanical code, they look at the building codes, they look at the, the MPCA regulations and then they look at all the different emission standards that are out there for particulate matter. And that's their recommendations based upon that, you know, from the MPCA.
Could you foresee in the future that maybe this would become an issue with MPCA and then start looking at having the residents give samples of their air quality? I'm just looking ahead going, okay, if, let's say that somebody does this, a resident, and all of a sudden MPCA comes out and says, well, guess what? We know you have one, you're gonna have to do quality testing for us to let you keep doing this.
Yeah, I, I guess I haven't been able to, I can't give you an answer to that. I do know that as, it could potentially very easily start saying it's a non-conforming use and if you're not using them or you're doing something, they've gotta be removed and, and taken out.
Yeah, I just don't want to put in undue cost on the residents if they do allow it and then all of a sudden they come back and say, guess what, you're gonna have to be regulated because you're, you're within.
I have no good answer for that, other than if you look at the standards that they're putting out, they're becoming more restrictive rather than less restrictive over time. And so...
I'm asking a question.
But you know what I mean? They're all becoming more restrictive rather than less restrictive over time. And I don't think you're gonna get the, the particulate matter down to something that's, you know, negligible when it comes to emissions because they're even, all of these are in place, or their recommended model ordinance is in place right now using the highest standards that, that are in place from the EPA guidelines on the new systems.
Mr. Larson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Kind of a similar question, but, and I had the same concerns President Olstead did. The ordinance that the MPCA has is just a recommendation and, and the city currently has the ability to put an ordinance into place that's less restrictive?
Correct.
If, I guess this is kind of like a question for you here, if we were pushed on that by a resident and you had to represent the city and, and, you know, this went to court and we had to defend why we were less restrictive than the MPCA, do you think that that would be a challenging lawsuit to argue against?
I think that there's a whole lot of other factors that would go along, that would go about within that. I think the, the issues that you start running into are more on the health related issues that you could potentially run into when it comes to having a less restrictive one. But there's less restrictive ordinances out there right now. It just depends upon where the MPCA would go with their, with their guidelines and their restrictions. And if they became very constrictive, they could require potentially these individuals to monitor them and maybe take them out. You know, just like they could with anything else. Or they're a non-conforming use and they give them a timeframe in which they have to become conforming to emission standards or distance standards or, or whatever. But as long as we have the ability to do it, I would, I, I guess it would be, I can't tell you if it's gonna, how difficult it would be because right now you have the ability to do that because it's just a recommendation.
Thank you. Mayor?
I'm curious, let's say we put an ordinance in hypothetically with 100 foot setback from adjacent habitable structures and whatever else we put in there. And if you did have a neighbor with some sort of hypersensitivity, right? So the average person, it wouldn't trouble them that degree of, of smoke particulate, but there's someone whose system is very, very sensitive and sure enough, they're having medical issues and they have documentation from their physician that says, yes, my child's airway is constricting because of this. What would we do, right? Just, just fast forward to that moment, what would we tell that resident that invested in that furnace? You can use it or you can't? What would, what would be our instruction based on our ordinance?
Well, I'm thinking, well, first of all, the ordinance wouldn't necessarily control because it would turn into a nuisance. And then it would either be a public nuisance or a private nuisance. And it wouldn't only be us that would be, in that case, that would be potentially involved in whether or not we're considering it a public nuisance. It would be a private nuisance and it could be a lawsuit from the, the neighbor because what they've got going on is affecting me. And, and those are, I can't even start to give you any real thought process on that. But I believe that's probably why they're primarily utilized in the country where you've got a lot of distance and why the recommendations are ag or industrial as opposed to residential.
Anything else?
Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wondering if the same hypothetical was the case and you moved into next, somebody next door to a wood fireplace and the same kid with asthma or whatever respiratory condition had the same effect, would we tell them that they could not use their fireplace? Or do we tell people they can only use their fireplace X amount of days per year or...
Bailing winds?
Yeah, I mean, I think you're...
And I think what you're doing is your hypotheticals are getting to a point where I can't do it and a private nuisance could be tried to be enforced by anybody. The, the difference, so, so I, I have no answer to that, Mr. Demers. All I can say is, is that if you're gonna allow a solid fuel boiler system that's gonna be a heating source for a shop, it's not gonna be used remotely. It's gonna be used consistently for a four to six month timeframe typically, you know? And so you're gonna have a lot more usage, but I can't, I, I, the city right now doesn't have, and, and fire pits, other heating sources, fireplaces are not included in the, the ordinances that are out there. They're all excluded in these ordinances. So I don't know how to answer that question.
I guess, and that was kind of my point, is we can go down these hypotheticals all you want. And I keep, I think the key word in your case is this hypersensitivity, you know, and I don't think we should govern for the most hypersensitive or the most extreme cases. We should govern for the majority and for the overwhelming majority or, I just, I really don't see the issue here. And, I mean, I understand people don't want big black cloud of smoke coming at their house from next door. I don't think that's the case. It's gonna be what it is. I, I think the idea of these setbacks isn't to prevent anything or to really create any real type of buffer. It's only to limit its usage and it, I think it's wrong to do that. But I'm probably, as in most cases, in the, in the pretty small majority or minority, sorry.
The, the only thing that I can say about the setback provisions that are in the model ordinance and, and with the EPA, they're all based upon emissions. It's not about restrictions, it's about the particulate matter and the emissions that are being distributed from these boiler systems. And, and I have, I mean, there's a science behind that, that way beyond me. So it's the, the same type of emissions that they're regulating with coal fire plants, asphalt plants, those types of things.
And there's mathematics behind it. If, you know, if it's a setback, the particulate would dissipate as a function of the radius squared. I mean, it, it fans out and so the concentration would become less and less the farther out you go. So it really is more than just, you know, making it hard to use your thing because you gotta walk 70 paces. It really is to try to make that stuff dissipate before it hits the adjacent property.
These things like, they burn like one log a day. You know what I mean? It's not like, it's not like, or what about, you know, we have people that probably have like pellet fed furnaces, which is the exact, or corn, I mean, corn is a little bit less emissions, but I would say not a ton more. Like these pellet fed things are the exact same thing, they're just crunched up, you know? I don't, I don't know if, I mean, is it legal to have a coal fired thing still? I don't know. I, I mean, to my point is, I get what you're saying about someone could come in and MPCA, who knows what they're gonna do, all of a sudden they're gonna outlaw all this stuff. I just, I really don't think it's a big deal. But like I said, put in whatever ordinance you want.
Could we come at it one more way? And that is, look at cities who've had them in place for more than a year and just find out what problems have they had? You know, I'd like to, you know, drill down to the ones who actually have the ordinance and had it in place for a year or more and what problems have they had? I mean, why, why not go to that extent and learn what's really happened once it starts?
Sure, but I think you should designate somebody from the city to get on the phone and make some of these phone calls because I don't really wanna spend my time and you don't wanna pay me to do that. So I think...
I'll pay you anytime.
Yeah, you know what I mean? So it's like, I, I think that somebody should, you're gonna have to do that because you're not gonna find that online anywhere.
Jeff and I can probably work together on that and bring something back at a work session in January, since we're kind of beyond the point of giving Mr. Johnson a permit or, or looking at it this year and he was okay with that, that gives us a little bit of time to do some digging. So yeah, the two of us together can kind of contact the cities that we're aware of. He, I mean, he's already in contact with Crookston and Bemidji, so we can kind of just keep going and, and get some information, maybe in an email format so that we have a little bit more.
Now, I'll put it out on a listserv as well for the city administrators.
Yep, and that's very helpful as well. And then we'll just bring it back in January.
I have another question for you though.
Yes?
When you were talking to the other cities, towns, whatever, is there any, a certain time period that they say these are, do they have a permit to use them with that ordinance? Do they have to be inspected at a certain time down the road to make sure they're operating?
Yeah, if they have a, if they have an ordinance, we can ask them for their ordinance so that we at least get a copy of it and see what they're, what they're requesting.
I don't see, I didn't see anything in the MPCA saying that. That's why I'm asking that question because maybe they've gone above and beyond what they have and did their own. Just a question.
Yeah.
Not saying that's what I want, I'm just asking if that's what they've had in there.
So a little bit of discussion I had with Bemidji and Morehead. Bemidji, it sounds like they have to be permitted to install them through the mechanical code and that is the same with Morehead, but they don't have an ordinance that approves them. So I'm not, couldn't quite put that piece together on how they do that.
Yeah, 'cause that's where we're at. Our mechanical code doesn't stop us per se from putting them in, but we also, they also don't, like Brad said, they also don't necessarily meet all of the requirements of the mechanical code. So there's a lot of things to look at when you're, you know, when you're trying to figure out whether or not we need an ordinance. It's, it's all very convoluted.
You all bring clarity, I know.
Yes.
I think Grand Forks could probably help you on that. If they had one over, they had removed.
Yes. Grand Forks does not allow them.
Why they had it removed or whatever, because...
Right, may I ask anything? No, we'll move on. Thank you, ma'am. Number two, discussion on recreation facility projects and potential local option sales tax. Reed?
All right, thank you, Mr. President, council members. It's that time of year to bring up...
It's that time of year to bring up sales tax discussion again. The deadline, as you all know very well, is January 31st to submit a sales tax request with the state. What was required for us if we're going to move forward a sales tax request is what the rate increase we're proposing should be, the expected length of time the tax would run, the projects that would be included in the request, and the amount of sales tax revenue to be used towards construction on the project. A little bit of homework I've done included in the packet for you just to kind of run through and refresh everybody's memory on it. According to the current Minnesota statute, sales tax must be voted on at a general election. So as that stands right now, the next one would be November 2024. There was discussion at last year's legislative session, specifically in the House of Representatives, to have the statute as it reads today updated to say the first Tuesday after the first Monday of November rather than specific to a general election. I don't know whether or not that's something that will come up again this year, but if that would come up and be written into an amended statute, it would, if we had a request there and approved this year, it would potentially allow us to vote in November of 2023 rather than waiting until 2024. Similar to our discussion right now, I did include in the packet, there were a number of communities that were at the legislative session in 2021 asking for approval to vote on sales tax projects. They all, those that were approved voted this last November. And I included the results of some of those and what projects they, they were asking for just for information so you can kind of see what sales tax requests look like. Recall, along with ours, in 2022 legislative session, there were no sales tax projects that moved forward just for the lack of a tax bill being passed. Included in the packet, I included the, some sales tax revenue projections based on different tax percentage increases. All of those are based off of the average monthly revenue we collected when we had the 1% sales tax on the swimming pool that sunset in 2020. That average monthly income was about $85,000 a month. So all of those scenarios that are in front of you are based off of that with a 1% annual inflation factor. That's the formula we came up with last year when we had this discussion. The one important thing to note on it is I have not asked Baker Tilly, the financial advisors, to update any of these scenarios for this year. So when you look at that spreadsheet, the interest rates are certainly different. We all know that, different today than they were a year ago. So I would expect as you look at that, the amount of funds available for project construction to be lower than what's shown on that spreadsheet. The interest that we'll pay on the project bond likely will be higher. If through discussion tonight, there's a percentage or two percentages that you'd like us to narrow our focus on, I think we could get back together with Baker Tilly and ask them to update those projections. I just didn't want to throw a whole bunch at them. Certainly their work has a cost as well. So I wanted to make sure we're as focused as possible in what we're asking them to look at. For, another for your information, at a previous council meeting work session, we talked about what the payment would be on a tax abatement bond. I included that if we were to borrow $4 million towards the project over a 10, 15, or 20 year debt service, what those annual payments would look like. Those numbers Baker Tilly ran in September of this year. And then finally, the last thing included is the project summary and the estimates that we detailed at an April work session last year while we were preparing for, or hoping that we would get approval to vote last in 2022. And in that summary, I included what the estimated construction cost was in 2023. And then I applied basically a 9% inflation, looking at now, looking at a 2025 construction rate. In discussion with construction engineers and JLG, at this point in time, knowing that we're still potentially as far as three years away from building anything, we didn't feel like it was worth really digging in and getting our knuckles into the estimates. And we just simply said, let's look at an eight to 10% inflation factor. And so we met at 9% and included that for comparative sake. So with that, I think just looking for direction tonight on the interest in moving forward a sales tax request for this year. And if so, what kind of percent and potential revenues does everyone have an interest in pursuing? It, it is, that is in the, kind of in the description and background on the RCA. So our request last year was a 1.25% increase to generate 21.5 million in project funding. Those projects were split, the Civic Center and baseball field improvements totaling 15.5 million, the VFW and Blue Line Arena totaling 6 million. And then expected to pay that or to generate that revenue over 20 years. That's, that's what we had in front of them. Yep.
My thought process too, I know you're looking at the 9% increase in 2025 too. Now that race probably, 18 to 24 months is probably going to start going back down too, so we might get a little relief on it hopefully. So that's a plus. I'm not going to go to get that to happen. But I think what, the biggest thing is with the one and a half and going back down to your sheet that you had, where was it again here? Bear with me, sorry. The estimated for 2025 costs. So we're looking at additionally with the increase total of 1.1 million, correct? If I'm reading that correctly? 1,175 almost or?
You're looking at the, this kind of the spreadsheet.
Spread this one here, the 2023 to 2025 construction estimate.
Yeah, so that, what Mr. Olsted is referring to, the top of the page says East Grand Forks Rec Facility Improvements, Infrastructure Safety. That list, those are some of the items that we would expect to be able to request state bonding for. So that's the difference there. If you go to the, the page that says, in green bold letters says Recreation Facility Investment Master Plan, keep going down in that spreadsheet you ran. It'd be this page.
This one here, okay, there it is.
So there's your total kind of, we, in April, at the April work session last year, we detailed kind of reductions to bring it to a 29.7 total million dollar project. Now that'd be up to a 32.5 million dollar project. So we're seeing, I mean, that's a pretty significant increase over a couple of years.
Because the state didn't want to pass anything.
Anybody else have anything right now?
I would just add, I'm concerned about the 1.25%. I, I guess I wasn't super comfortable with it before. I voted in favor of it, you know, the program is great and we need to make, you know, some generational investment here. But being the only city above 1% really makes us stick out on that spreadsheet. And I think we should really think hard about if we want to be an outlier and is that, should we expect that that vote would, would pass at that percentage? So that's, that's something that I'm still really concerned about. You know, we, we can't do this, looking at the percentages, it looks like, you know, nearly all of the referendums passed other than two or three. But if we set ourselves up for, for failure by asking for too high, that's really shame on us. That's my thoughts.
Mr. Olsted, if I could.
Yeah, go ahead.
So thank you, Mr. Larson, for that. I guess if I'm speaking just kind of my feelings on this too. When we first started discussing this in 2000, really heavily in 2017, 18, we looked at an initial building plan thinking we were going to add a new arena onto the Civic Center. And the total expected cost for that portion of it, we thought was somewhere between 16 and 18 million dollars. And COVID put us back and then not getting anything done in a legislative session last year put us back again. And now all of a sudden this project has swelled even further to who knows what, right? When it gets there. I look at it the same way and last year we didn't even look at 0.75%. And I threw that scenario on your paper today because you look at the projects that passed in, in this last election, anything that's at that half percent or keeps the total tax at under 8%, they're successful. And my fear with it, I want us to get the best project done for East Grand Forks, whatever that is. But at the same time, I don't know that we can fail. If we're, if this is the plan that the city wants to move forward to improve these rec facilities, I don't know that we can afford to fail because how else are the improvements going to get done any other way? So I agree with you, Mr. Larson, in that. I don't know if 0.75% is the number, if it's 1% or if it's something totally different than that. But that's, to me, the prerogative we have here too is we have to figure out what number it is that's going to be successful. Because looking at, looking at borrowing $4 million and trying to add that to our general tax levy, you're talking about a 5 or 6% a year for 20 year increase on the general levy. So I'm just, you know, kind of speaking off the cuff a little bit, but I think we need to work really hard on figuring out what number it is that can be successful.
That is successful in St. Paul and then successful at the polls locally in the fall.
Yeah.
Both.
And if we went to the point, just for discussion, if we did the 0.75, I'm assuming, I didn't see the numbers you ran on it, so what would that generate?
Yeah.
Of course, we all know, yes, it's going to be lower. We get it. Oh, there it is, sorry.
About 12 million, yeah, in projects. So if we had 12 million in project funding, that's where I, if you go back to that other spreadsheet that kind of included the list of what we could request for bonding, those infrastructure type projects, those are really the, that's the bones of the buildings, right? Of the arenas. That's the really, that what makes those things go. And that's about 13 million. So now, if that's the scenario we look at and we say, the fundraising study we did came back to say that the sales tax revenue could and should be the basis to start a fundraising drive. We don't know what we can fundraise, but we need something to start it. We need a whale. We have, we don't have a whale. This revenue from the city could be the city's contribution to that really to start a good fundraising effort. So there, let's add some fundraising dollars. We should and could have every opportunity to ask the state for some bonding. Other projects similar to this have been funded through state bonding. The Civic Center in Grand Rapids got $5 million for their ice arena. Alexandria got $5 or $6 million for their ice arena. So we still have an opportunity to add to this project beyond just fix the bare bones of what's going on in the arenas and make it be something successful for our community. You know, no matter what, all of it's going to take a lot of work, but I, that's, those are my initial gut feelings towards it.
I know you reached out to Johnson and Keel also. Have you had any feedback from them at all?
I haven't heard back from either of them about the bonding request. No.
And I'm just thinking, I, in my mind, I'm thinking right now too is that, A, we have a council meeting next week and we don't have one the following week, 27th could, but we don't, which is the 27th. Next work session actually is the 13th, or 10th, excuse me, because our first meeting's the 3rd, January 3rd. So if your deadline's January 29th, I mean, we really don't have a lot of meetings before that you have to have everything to them. So in my mind, this would have to be, if we would need it to in January, have special meetings to go over this stuff because we wouldn't have enough work sessions. And you'd have one council meeting and the next one's right after your deadline, basically, because you got the 10th and the 17th and then you're at 20, was it 25th, 26th? So I mean, you're, to get a consensus on this? I don't, that's what I'm trying to think. Are we going to have enough time to go through this and say this is what we want to do? Not saying in my mind, I want to push this back till next year, which I don't, I mean, because then you're doing this and then we're going into session again and you want to do the vote the following year. Is the outlook for the financial outlook going to be better in a year? I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm just talking out loud, just trying to walk through it because, you know, we only have so much time to, from now until end of January. I don't know what everybody else thinks because I want to make sure we're doing this right and we're not jumping and just going, okay. I know we've done all this study, we've talked about it, we tried to do it last year. Didn't happen. And now we're back at it again. I don't want to just rush to it and say, okay, this is, we want to go from what we were at down to 1 or 0.75. I don't want to do that without having the ramifications, knowing of how that's going to affect what we are actually going to be able to do. And we really don't know until we get quotes and that's the bad thing. And yes, that's going to, you're going to have changes in it. And I just, I don't know. Mr. Rappel?
Another tough option here is to take the 3/4% and extend the term to 25 years. I'm not sure how much play that would give us, but it might give us enough to get over that amount.
I guess these are numbers you can run with Baker Tilly, you know, and, and I don't know, that's $3 million almost in increase, you know, is just so hard to swallow, you know?
Yeah, I don't like the longer term. I'll be honest, I don't, I don't like it. I think it's a waste, actually.
I guess you gotta do a cost benefit of how, if you do stretch it out, how much you're really costing you.
Painting.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of looking at a bridge, you know?
I mean, that's simple enough. If we're, if we're going to focus on 0.75 or 1%, that's simple enough to ask to look at the term length.
Yeah.
I would just, my, my feeling of this, I would really like, if we're going to move forward a sales tax request, we need to get it down there this year is my sense. I just don't want us to put, to put ourselves in a position again to get, to wait till next year to have something happen outside of our control.
They don't prove it.
And not, not have an opportunity again to vote because then, where are we at then? You know?
Year 26 for vote.
And even if it is to vote in the fall of '24, you're building momentum that whole time.
Yeah.
You don't want to miss a year of momentum building.
Yeah. And the real, I don't, I think no matter what, whether we wait, we know now or we wait until 2024 January to go to St. Paul, I truly don't know that we really know at that time what the project looks like because there's still so much, we've seen that over the last couple of years, there's so much potential for dynamics to change from January to September even, that we, this is the first step of a, of a project, right? Is getting a request to St. Paul to get approval for. And then it's really in the buildup to the vote, whatever year we're approved to vote on, where we need to narrow down closer into building estimates and construction estimates to be able to tell the community what we think we can do for that dollar amount. You know, we're just, we're, at this time, I believe, we're approving potential revenues and what project sites will be included in the ballot.
I wonder if Mr. Gordy could reach out to our business community and ask them if in their view, 0.75 or 1% would be considerably more favorable from a business standpoint, helping them stay competitive in the marketplace, identify some key businesses and just find out if they feel that would be a really significant difference to help them maintain their competitiveness in our region. I'd like to get that feedback from them.
I'll bring up the calendar again because 27th, we're supposed to, Megan, don't give me a look. 27th, we were supposed to have a recession. But. But we were going to suggest maybe we shouldn't have one because it's the holidays between December 1st, you know? So the next one would be, like I said, January 10th, council meeting 17th and 24th, work session, and he has to have it down by end of January. So I guess my question is, would people rather have the 27th off and then do some special meetings in January, which is my recommendation?
[laughing]
Or would people want?
[inaudible]
Seventeenth?
Depending on the direction for the work session. Couple avenues.
Yeah. I mean, so, I mean, what's your preference? Reed?
The documents are all prepared. So having the resolution pass and having the time for it to be signed by yourself and the mayor is, that's, to me, the time we need. The documents are ready to go. So if it's January 24th and we're comfortable that it's going to be signed, that's plenty of time to have it all prepared and ready.
The ifs right there.
I'm good at the mayor's signature.
It might be good to shoot for the 17th.
Yeah.
Give ourselves a week if we come to loggerheads here and have to duke it out.
Or blizzard.
Whatever, but we can't miss it. So special meetings, whatever, I think we got to get it done.
Don't forget, there'll be two new council members, too.
We have a recession on the 27th and approve it on 28th.
Question on the bonding, I know that's, to talk about it is a long shot, but if that, if that were a component of the funding, it'll be interesting to understand how we talk about the scope of the work. Because, you know, we'll be talking about whatever percentage sales tax that, you know, we're going to move forward with is worth 12 to 15 million dollars. Well, that's this base scope, then there's this potential for the bonding that would allow some improvements to happen and not just address deferred maintenance. So we'll really have to kind of understand how we're going to communicate with the community, you know? What are they voting for? And not, not get the cart in front of the horse or even separate the two, you know, we may end up with your list here of all deferred maintenance items, and that's where the sales tax dollars go. I know in an ideal world, the bonding dollars addresses these deferred maintenance, parking lots, safety issues, and that we can improve opportunities for the residents. So that, that's an interesting puzzle there that I don't really have my head wrapped around yet, but something that we'll need to talk about.
Ideally, you know, if, I don't know if anything works ideally, but ideally, we would know about the bonding before we would vote. So there's, the 2024 legislative session should be a bonding year, and if we had a request in, we would know about that in June 2024 and then be able to educate our residents leading up to a November 2024 vote. You know, order of events working out in that favor for us. Of course, it doesn't always have to work that way.
Yeah. If it does, that would be ideal.
Yeah.
I think one of the biggest things in the bonding, too, is it's, they're going to look at what is our buy-in ourselves. That's going to be the biggest thing we have to show. That's been the message every time we've gone down there, what's your, what you're taking it. So that's going to be the biggest thing, so. Anybody else have anything right now? I mean, I know you have a couple of questions that you need to get for us. I think we've got our timelines down, or estimated timelines we can work with to make sure we get things down there. Again, this is something we have to do to get the state to allow us to do this, does not mean it's going to affect once they approve us to be able to do it. So it's just a process that the citizens can look at, and hopefully by November of '24, we'll be able to vote on it. So we've got a long ways to go. Anybody else have anything? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Review 2023 budget. Carla?
Thank you, Council President and Councilman. There's a lot of papers I shared with you, so I guess we're going to just start with page one, I think would be easiest. So on the request for council action, I just kind of said what I had included. So the next page is on the revenue expenditure summary, and this is the same page I gave you when you approved the levy at 10%. So it's just recapping the expenses again and the revenue. And the next sheet is the resolution for that, and these are all in the general fund, which we have talked about. So what I really want to talk about is special revenue funds and enterprise funds. So I included the details for the cemetery. We'll look at that one first. And the cemetery, if you see, there's salaries and wages. We do have a couple of employees that do work at the cemetery, their wages come out of there. We do have some administrative fees, Reed's salaries that come out of there. And then if you look, it says transfers in for the general fund of $21,552. That is actually on our, within the numbers here on the general fund for revenue and expenses, and it is included in our 10% levy. So if we have questions, you can ask me them now or you can ask me them later. Any questions on the cemetery? The next fund is the Community Growth Fund, and Nancy, actually, is in charge of this. It's dollars that were left over from CD, BG funds. And we, the $10,000 on that professional services is that we use for the GIS replodding, and that we actually have set that up to use that until it runs out. And by then, we should have all that replodding done. And if Nancy can, do you want Nancy to explain that a little more?
Only if you want.
Well, only if you want, so.
You don't need to, you don't need to hear me. Don't have any questions.
We're just going to use this till it's gone, then it's gone?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
And it's the replodding of the properties that no longer have buildings on it.
Yeah. And it's kind of, it was limited on what it can be used for, and we just thought this would be a good way to use it for it so that we wouldn't have to take out our general fund dollars.
Yes.
Next one is greenway maintenance. As you can see, what we collect every year, that has been adjusted now, so next year it will go up 5%. There was a, we voted on that last year to go up 5% every year, and Reed has in that they will do $10,000 worth of improvements, just minor improvements in the greenway maintenance. Nancy's here for transit. So the next one is the...
Question for, Reed, can you remind me on that green, we had like an every other year capital plan for the greenway maintenance? Is that right or is it every third year?
Yeah, it is every third year was the plan for that, and it did start, I think, maybe, if it's not 2024, it's 2025 because our account was in the negative when we put the increase in. So we need to let the account just grow for a few years before we start. The $10,000 plan is just to do some crack patching.
Got it. Thank you.
And you'll notice that the large reconstruction was done in 2021.
The overlay?
Yes. Transit, we put, Nancy and I sat down, we looked at, we have federal grants, state grants, Nancy's salaries come out of there, and the transfer in is in the general fund transfer of $105,287 is what we estimated. And she kind of explained the whole grant situation and applying for that at the last meeting, but if you have questions of Nancy? Insect control, this is under Public Works. This is a monthly fee that we get on, on your water and light bill that's called bug, the bug fee, which some of us are very happy that we have no bugs. And their salaries out of that is when they actually go out there and spray. And as you can see, there isn't any capital purchases. Last year, there was a capital equipment purchase on that, so that's pretty basic, you know? And expenditures always depends on rain and mosquitoes, so questions on insect control? Next fund is new home incentive. We have, this is where our lot sales that the city owns goes in. Part of that purchase goes back to the actual cost of the lot. The remainder goes into the fund to be used. I guess the highlight on that, if you look under, there's Building Project 1, 2, and 3. The EDA Board has committed to allow builders to come in, and they can borrow up to $100,000 to build that, their home, and then it gets paid when it is sold. The issue, we've had one builder that has taken use of that. So any questions on that fund? Perpetual care is our cemetery fund that we use to keep the cemetery perpetually there. And what we do is we take 40% of the lot sales of the current year goes into this fund so that there's continuance for the cemetery to be ran. As you can see, there is a transfer to the cemetery fund for some projects that are being planned for 2023. Questions on perpetual care? Infill building? We do have an agreement for a small increase in rent every year that's been put into place. I believe it lasts, the contract is for a three-year, three-year program, I think, and the only salaries that come out of there is building maintenance, and we have a building maintenance person, Sunny, that will go over there and periodically do work. So we do set up a budget to do that with that. And then basically, it's just normal utilities, communications, and such in that fund.
The leases, were there two different leases on the building?
Questions on infill building?
The rental revenue, does it drop down in '23 from '22?
We just had a better estimate.
Better estimate?
Yeah. Just, I think we were probably between one coming up and not the other one. He just said how they were staggered.
I see. And so we're just off by $1,300 or so. Okay.
State aid fund, this is the state aid maintenance funds, which we receive every year from the state. If you see in the budget, we, 2022 was 160, we're estimating to have 190 in that. There are no projects within this because we transfer that to other funds, so, and the other funds, there's $518,481. That is because we have a project fund account, which is the Fund 414. And so we do all the expenses for the projects out of that account. At year end, we will make a transfer to cover those expenses. And if you look below that, we have bond issued proceeds. So when 23rd Street was put in, we actually took out a bond, a PFA loan, which is Minnesota Public Facilities Association or group, whatever. And so out of our maintenance funds, we do get money every year to pay for the bond and to pay for the interest. So if you look at the next section, interest for 2023 is $87,187, and the bond payment is $113,000. So now, I actually included here a little more history on the state aid maintenance fund, so you can see how it has paid for other projects. So for 2023, we, our plan is to pay for the city, well, the share of the quiet zone, what BN SF is not helping us pay. So we're expecting to pay $369,000 for that in 2023. We have the Third Street and replacement, those are our match for our federal subtarget dollars. And then we have Le Fay Park improvement match for $67,953. And in the Le Fay Park, we can start construction, I believe, on that. We're going to try get some bids out here this winter and start on that. The Le Fay Park match is going to come out of a few funds. It's going to come out of the state aid fund. There is some stormwater work that needs to be done, so the stormwater fund will pay for some of those. We're actually lucky that the street will be tore up, so we can do that at the same time. And then we do actually have a few dollars left projecting after we have our Civic Center compression project, that some of will come out of the sales tax, left over from the sales tax, from the pool. And then I try to project what we're going to do for the next, I guess, six, seven years on there, so you can look at that. And I know I did mention this before, but, you know, at some point in time, we will be doing a citywide seal coat and mill and overlay. And last time we did that project, we did not bond for it. The city share, we paid for it out of this fund. Questions on state aid maintenance?
Those blue projects for '24, are those the sidewalk connection projects that we deferred?
Correct.
Yeah, we talked about them maybe a month or so ago.
Correct.
Okay. Do you know how much of that, after the compressor is paid for, how much of that sales tax is left that's going towards the Le Fay Park?
I have it here. I'll have to guess off the top of my head, Reed, however I could help. It's like 160, I think? I think it's 160.
16124 is what we're expecting to be left.
Thank you for looking. Or having at the top of your head. So.
And that's all okay? The way that we voted on those dollars, they can go into parks and rec?
Yes. And that was the discussion we had since it was for a park improvement, that they should be used for park improvements.
Sure.
So.
Thank you.
They're kind of all kind of being combined and when we're, when we're looking at them, so I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you.
It's ADA one.
Yeah, so the proposal for Third Street is the ADA project that we have for 2023. We're kind of doing them at the same time as that street improvement, just to help with costs and such. Right, Steve? Is that correct? We're kind of trying to bid them at the same time so for, try to save costs. Building maintenance, we receive $350,000 every year from Water and Light. They did increase that in 2021, so thank you, Water and Light. And so we have, I have them on the list here, but if you go to the next sheet, I have them down by years, which is kind of easier to see. So in 2022, those funds, and I just thought I'd put in 2022 so you can see what it's used for, what it's been used for, and then that, that, there's a balance carrying forward. So in 2022, the senior center oning roof was done. We have library roof repairs that are still being done. And the fire station one, the roof replacement, there's just a few things left on that, and I think Jeff has updated you on that. So we have withheld our retainage on that. And then we had some roof inspected, and then there's outdoor rink lights that we are putting at, for skating. And those are just about complete. So in 2023, we're looking at stowls, brick fencing, sand, salt, shed, concrete at Public Works, park shop improvement and siding, senior center HVAC, Le Fay picnic shelters, that is part of the Le Fay match, just because those were, would be picnic shelters we had fixed. So we are taking them out of the building maintenance fund to cover that cost. And then we have, when the inspect came and looked at our roofs, there is a schedule on when some of the roofs should probably need some repairs done just to extend the life of the roof. And then you can look the same for 2024. Yes?
That HVAC for senior center, is that something, for something specific?
Don't worry, I forewarned them, they have to come up and speak, so they're ready.
Sure. Yeah, that's a project I'm waiting to get some pricing, official pricing back on to bring to a future council meeting, but it would replace two, I'd call them residential quality furnaces that heat the main dining area and the kitchen space in that building, as well as the two air conditioners that sit on the rooftop now with commercial-grade rooftop units for the building. So the main benefit that we'd receive from it is it would bring the building up to date for commercial ash ray standards, to bring in fresh air return, and greatly increase the ability to cool the building properly in the summer months, specifically the commercial kitchen area.
So if we were to sell that building, would it be better to sell it without that update?
I can't answer that. I don't know.
I... I just, I think we should get rid of it. So I'll say it.
Yeah. I could answer if it has more value or not with the commercial system, but it's certainly more appropriate. A commercial rooftop system would be more appropriate for the use of the building.
Other, other questions? And then I've extended that out to 2027, just to underestimate what we'd be using the money for. And then attached are a couple printouts of our capital improvement plan. So we've talked about most of them on here. The first is the building maintenance fund. And then the cemetery fund, we have the sidewalk irrigation, that is what the project is. And that money will come from the perpetual fund and transfer to the cemetery fund, because the cemetery fund will actually do the project within their funding system. So now, if you look at the CIP financing fund, I have enlisted the fuel pump island in 2023. The fuel system we have at Public Works right now has long extended its life for many years now. And Jason and Jeremy have been looking at replacing that. They looked at putting a different kind of system in. They looked to put one above ground, which actually costs more. It has more restrictions on that. And so they are looking at putting a new in-ground system for $215,000. I think at first, we thought it would be closer to 350. So we're very excited that it's not that much. And many departments receive fuel there. And we are trying to figure out how we could pass on that $215,000, $215,000 to all the users, which would be very difficult. And so our suggestion is to pay the $215,000 out of our CIP financing fund and not repay it back, like we do typically in other projects. And we'll get, I'll show you that in a minute. And then if you look at the other things, 2024, we're looking at a payloader, and we're looking at a motor grader. So if you skip over, are we, projects by department, and we get to, it's called capital financing fund, this one here. We put in here what we're planning to spend the money on in 2022. We're still waiting to get our Zamboni gas, Zamboni, but it should be coming in in 2023. So that money will just roll. If you look, we have general fund repayments, and we have interfund payments. The interfund payments are the stormwater fund. We bought slope mowers for those funds, and then we, they repay us with interest and principal. And then if you look, there's bond payments. So in 2020, 2012, there was a bond that we had for our trailer truck, I believe. And then in 2015, we have a garbage truck. And so those are the interests. If you notice, those bond payments end in 2023, and that was, that's the last time we will pay for the garbage. So in 2023, we're looking at fuel pumps. And then Jason just mentioned how they are in dire need of a garbage truck. And so our plan is to purchase that out of the CIP financing fund, and they would repay us, just like those other payments we have in there, instead of taking out a bond like we did in years before. And the other thing, it's in 2023, is that he doesn't know how quick we can get a garbage truck. So it probably won't even be available till 2024, but we want to get it into 2023 so that we can get it ordered. He said there's a problem getting chassis and stuff. So, and what we would, we would work with the National Joint Powers Source, which actually does the bidding already for us, to purchase that garbage truck. And then in 2024, there's a couple other items for Public Works. And so if you look, you can go through, we have them through to 2027. If you get, look at 2026 on the turf, that would be, the turf is actually part of that whole park and rec project. However, the turf money to pay for that has always been something we've kind of saved the altar money for. And Reed can, if I don't explain it well, please come up. But we just have it on there, but we do intend to have the money available when we, when it comes due. We just don't, it all depends on the project and the arenas and such. But we wanted to have it on there, so you're aware of it. I also included the central equipment fund, how, on the paybacks, so you can see what is being paid back to that fund, just for informational purposes. For example, like the police, we've had the radios, which we know will be soon, their life will soon be done. So that is something we have to think about, too. Questions on any of those funds? Okay, so we're going to go into the enterprise funds. I just did recaps for electric and water. They have been approved by the Water and Light Commission. And typically, it's, the rate has been a 5% increase for water and electric, except for large commercial. Refuge collection, there's a recap, and then there is line by line. There are no rate increases for refuse, wastewater, or stormwater for the city this year. But we wanted to make sure you saw the information and that you could look through it and approve that, if it's, if the budget, the way it's written right now.
Okay.
So that's a refuse fund. Like I said, we have the sewer fund and the line items.
Carla, question for you on the refuse collection.
Yes.
And maybe it's buried in there. Are we able to break out our costs and Countrywide's costs?
Um...
Or maybe that's a separate analysis?
It's probably a separate analysis. Let me quick look, because we have actually disposal charges and...
I guess, I don't need to break...
But I can get that to you.
Yeah.
It's easy. I just, I'll just, I can, we can look up the vendor and tell you what it is.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
I know what our refuse, our disposal charges are, about $20,000 a month.
Okay.
On that. And then it looks like the recycling is probably about, probably about the same. But I can get that for you.
Yeah. And then just some information on that contract and the terms of that contract.
Yeah, I believe the contract is up in 2025. Because, oh, 2024. It's a five-year contract.
Okay.
So the last time we renewed it was in 2019. So we will be revisiting that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sewer operations, like I said, there's a recap here. And then there's the detail on that. And then we have stormwater. And there's a recap on that. And then there's a detail. So then on Tuesday, there would just be that, the first, the resolution and the beginning of the PAC to vote on, which is, we vote on the general fund. The numbers are on there. So. Any other questions?
May I have any questions for Carla? See none, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
All right. Entertaining motion to adjourn. Move. Mayor Larson. Second by reappeal. No in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Means adjourned.